I'd like to call the regular meeting for the Nash Town Council to order at this time. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we invite you into our meeting to lead us, guide us, give us your wisdom in making the right decisions for the citizens of Nashville. Amen.
Amen.
Well, our first item on the agenda is the approval of our meeting minutes. So let's look at September the 7th. Did anybody find any corrections that needed to be made to those minutes?
Being none, I move to be yourself.
Second.
I have one question.
Okay.
Sorry. On page 12, this has to do with the wellhead protection. I indicated at the meeting that you couldn't tell where the well was on those maps. And here it says that it could be assumed that the well was located in the center of the large circle. I don't assume anything. Are we going to get maps that indicate that?
I can get those individually to the council, but NCDQ and rural water advise against locate, putting the location of the well on the map because it is a public document and it could be used by domestic terrorists. But yes, we can get it to the council members.
Okay, it would just for us to be able to see where the wells are?
Yes.
I mean, if nothing else, we need to know where the wells are.
Did I hear second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes for September the 7th, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and the minutes are approved. Now let's look at our next minute, September the 16th, 2021. Any corrections to those minutes? If there are no corrections, do I hear a motion that we approve these minutes?
Aye.
There's second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. At this time, this is our public comment time. I will call your name if you signed up to speak. Please come to the podium, state your name and your address, and you will have three minutes to speak and our clerk will be timing you. So the first person is Jeff Williams.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, my name is Jeff Williams. I live at 320 Fox Hall Drive in Rocky Mount, but I have, I do own adjacent property to the proposed Cardinal Woods subdivision, and I am a concerned citizen. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to share my concerns. And I have three primary concerns. Number one is the traffic in and around the school and the park that will be caused by the additional 246 homes. While the school is proposing adding a drop-off and pickup lane, you and I still know that the same number of cars will be entering and exiting Glover Drive. And I think you'd agree, the worst possible entrance to a neighborhood has to be between a school and a park. It'll only be a matter of time before someone gets hurt if you allow this to be the major entrance. And I would just please encourage the council to find an alternative route into this neighborhood. My second concern is the additional stormwater runoff that will be caused from the additional 246 ditch-lined homes. The existing neighborhood already complains of flooding during major rain events, and the wetlands on the backside of this property flood during major rain events as well. So I'm concerned over this additional stormwater runoff. I'm not an expert, I know nothing about the requirements of making this happen, but I just would request that this be, please be addressed to make sure there's adequate provision and protections in place. And my number three concern is the loss of habitat for the wildlife that enter, that inhabit these woods and wetlands around this property. This area is currently a wildlife-rich environment, used by deer, turkey, ducks, beaver, otter, quail, and a variety of waterbirds. Just last Wednesday, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service declared an additional 23 species of plants and animals extinct, gone forever. Biologists across the globe say we are in an extinction crisis today. The rapid disappearance of biodiversity is occurring a thousand times faster than any time in history. While studies may show today that there are no endangered species on this property, here's what we do know. Bird populations have decreased in the U.S. by over 30% since 1970. Waterbird species have declined by 22%, the same species that use the surrounding wetlands. And bobwhite quail populations have declined by 80%. These declines happen so subtly that we hardly notice until it's too late. I ask you to look back at the changes that have occurred in your lifetime. What will it be like for the next generation and those to come? We have a chance to make a difference. History will judge us one day by what we have done or possibly by what we have not done. You have an opportunity to make a difference today. I'm sure that the developer is a responsible developer, but they're only going to do what is required. When human footprints expand into environments formerly dominated by wildlife, animal species fail to cope. This area will never again be the same. I would beg you to at least require a larger wooded buffer between the homes and wetlands. Nashville is a desired community. Please make sure this is done responsibly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity.
Jeff, give me your last name again, please.
Uh, Williams.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Uh-huh. Arnetta Hetschbath?
My name is Arnet Hetschbath, and I live at 200 Essex Road. My question, how many of you have been on Essex Road? You have, you have, and I know you have. Okay. Had a very interesting experience yesterday. I called the town to get information about the last time Essex Road was paved. Somebody named Lee at Streets told me he would call me back. Well, as the day was winding down, I called the town hall, and I was referred to somebody named Randy. This is what Randy says. "The records that would give me the answer are stored in a room stacked at the Streets' office. There's some talk of hiring an engineering firm to go through those records and put them on computer. The best way to find out when our road was last paved is to ask your neighbor." I'm like, well, are we in Mayberry? We in the 21st century, and you can't tell me when my street was last paved? I can't remember from talking to my neighbors who have been there 30-plus years as well as myself, some 40-plus years. It's never been paved. Who gonna argue with that when they can't find the records whether it was done or not? My concern, Nashville, you're not being good stewards of what you already own. Can you accept the additional responsibilities of a subdivision with 240-plus houses with curves, not curves, I'm sorry, ditches and sidewalks? I say no at this point, I can't see it. The engineer has talked about the environmental impact, as this gentleman just did, but in my practical mind, if you're gonna pave over 100 acres of land, you can't build enough of them pools or whatever you call them to take care of the water. At Nash Central School, there's already a problem with sewage, but that ain't y'all's problem. One of my neighbors who works there said you can smell the sewage when you're walking through the halls when it's raining. I cannot support unless Nashville becomes responsible for taking care of what we already got. I cannot see adding anything else.
Thank you. The next person is Telza Plummer.
What's her first name?
Telza, T-E-L-Z-A.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Telza Plummer. I live at 309 Battle Drive. I would like to thank Mr. Lansing and the town council for their decision to tear down two homes in the Brooklyn area. I really appreciate all the residents over in Brooklyn area. Next, I have a problem about drainage. Most of you don't know, but I know. Poor drainage has always been a problem in the Brooklyn area. A ditch was put out, put in the back of six homes on Battle Drive. The town of Nashville Sanitation Department is responsible for maintaining the ditch. This hasn't been done, not since I've been there. I was told that an easement isn't even. According to the definition, an easement is permission to cross or otherwise use someone else's land for a specified purpose. We are not asking the town to dig a ditch, that's already been done, just to clean out the existing ditch. That way, that ditch was put there by the town, by the way. If the ditch were maintained, the water would drain out to Brooklyn Boulevard. In closing, I have pictures that show how the water has backed up in our backyards for over 20, 25 years. The previous town manager can attest to this because of poor drainage. I've listened to the council put emphasis on beautification of downtown area of Nashville, but it seems that the Brooklyn area has been forgotten about. We have seniors there that pay taxes. We also concerned about our neighborhood. As the other lady said, if you've never been over on, uh, Battle Drive, Rose Street, and Brooklyn Boulevard, you'll see, districts in our front yards and in the street are not covered with paper and debris and ballast, because when we see that, we pick it up. But we should not have to clean our ditch in the back of our homes. I have did it somewhat in the back of my home, and I shouldn't even have to do that because of my age. I shouldn't have to do it anyway, because we pay taxes, and that is, only thing we require over there is that drainage. It's been there for years. Like I said, I have pictures that will show how that water has backed over there, backed up in our yards for over 30 years. That is a fact. Now, like I said, we are not asking for a grant. The maintenance of the ditch we asking for so it won't be infested in the spring with mosquitoes and frogs, which are terrible. And we have to endure that standing water for five and six weeks, whereas the water, if the ditch were kept clean, the water would drain out to Brooklyn Boulevard. That's the closest drainage that we have. So I hope the town council will consider the importance of what I've said. I really do, because it's important to me. And if you ever drive through there, look at our streets. People have flowers and everything, they keep the streets clean. We don't have the biggest house, but we're proud of what we do have. So thank you very much for listening. I hope you will take consideration, take into consideration what I've said.
And thank you for sharing and making us aware of that. We appreciate it.
And if you would like to see the pictures, I have the pictures. Where the, the water has stood back there for over 20, 25 years, and I have documentation. Other people have also wrote the town of Nashville to know there, nothing's been done.
Just pass those pictures around and we'll get them back to you. Thank you so much.
Has the town never cleared that ditch out by then?
No.
Never?
No, it will come over there. It's gonna pick up garden.
Randy, do we really not have an easement on it? How did we get the drainage ditch in?
Evidently, when it was created, the town just simply got permission from the property owners to go in and excavate a ditch, and there's no formal easement.
Can we get permission from the property owners to go in and clear it out?
Sure we can.
Okay.
I've already reached out to a surveyor to draft a legal description and put together a, an easement plat that we can take to the property owners and get the easement. It's not the only one, there's three other ones, four other ones, that I'm working on the exact same way.
Okay.
Mr. Lansing, may I ask you a question? If the ditch was already there, why do we have to get an easement to go across the property? Ditch was already there, it's been there a long time, but it's never been cleaned up.
I know, I know you're agreeable to having, giving us permission to go there, but the next property owner may not. And having the easement assures us that we have legal permission to go there to do what we need to do.
That's for you, particularly in town council, but I've already spoke to every landowner on that block, there are about seven, and I told them it would help them also. And Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown here, Mr. Brown told me about the easement, but my point is like this, the ditch has been there for years, it hasn't ever been cleaned, not since I've been there.
Well, you made us-
It would help the water drain out to Brooklyn Boulevard.
You made us aware of it, and I'm new here, I've been here two years, so we're gonna try to help you out, I promise.
Thank you so much.
Joey Raybo?
Joey Raybo, 404 South Austin Street, Nashville, North Carolina. I am not against her expanding, but y'all need to consider Glover Park and the school because, Kate, two years ago, when you were playing soccer, when we had football games and soccer games going at the same time, it's a mess. About, about you have Hornets games, three games from eight o'clock until about three o'clock in the afternoon, and then soccer game from 10 o'clock about to two o'clock, and the traffic is like lined up directly for that road into the middle school area. And it's like, and then especially now with, when we merged with the county, we got baseball tournaments, they had softball tournament this Saturday, this past weekend, you may have traffic delore and all that, and then you, now this Saturday morning, we got Hornets games going, a Hornets game going on in the morning. Y'all need to come and see what the parking thing is issue at, when, when, when the main parking lot of Glover Park is filled up, everybody's coming to the road and into the middle school because I can see it from the football field because the press box, you can see it from the rows and all that. And I'm not against it for its growing, but y'all need to think about when the school is right here and the, and the park is right there, and the time mornings for the school, Nash Central's there from about 6:30 until about 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock, because the traffic goes through Glover Park's parking lot into the school and all that. And now the traffic is going-
And the traffic can't handle that.
When Glover Park parking lot fills up, everybody starts parking on Glover.
Parking on the street.
On the street.
And then it full flows over.
And if that fills up, they start parking over in the middle school.
Mm-hmm. So we got too many things going on at the same time.
Well, we also have, it's gravel parking in there, so it's not delineated, and so people park in ridiculous manners.
You know, Kate, for two years ago-
We do.
Yeah, so that was my main concern is when, if y'all do that subdivision, that traffic's gonna go, and then especially on the weekends when you got sporting events going on at the park, and especially weeknights, weeknights when you got baseball, softball, and soccer going on at the park at the same time. And then you got lights going on at the same time, when, if we have a football game at nighttime, the lights come on, and, and you can see that from, from the new subdivision.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Ms. Sherry, I, I know with, with the subdivision is going in behind, proposed to go in behind the school, that the traffic study was done for that. Did that traffic study take into consideration with that park being there, with the amount of traffic that park accommodates?
Yes. And also the school.
And the school.
Because I did notice their prime, their prime traffic times, which are like gonna be your, your prime rush hour for work times.
In the morning.
It's outside of those school drop-off and pickup times.
Right.
Mornings.
So, so the morning drop-off is 7:00 at the middle school, correct?
I don't know, but, but the peak, I'm sorry.
6:50? So the morning drop-off at the school is 6:50, and so I think it was 7:00 to 9:00 was the, what they took into consideration for that, and then the main traffic in the afternoon was 3:00 PM and on, and I think pickup at the middle school was 1:00, 1:00, no? 6:50, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12?
I think traffic study was 4:00 to 6:00.
4:00 to 6:00?
For the PMP.
Okay, so tra, so the traffic was 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon?
Right.
And the pickup at the middle school is earlier?
Thank you, Joey. Bob Mitchell?
I'll wait until, when you get this out, so we can discuss it.
Okay. Thank you. So that ends our public comment. Know, yeah, it does, I put notes on the back, I thought it was somebody else's name, I have to transfer those. All right, the next item on our agenda is the consideration of the MOU involving the donation of 1.84 acre parcel for a dog park near Stony Creek Environmental Park, possibly of a lease for an additional parcel for the same purpose. Chloe, thank you so much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So one of the most discussed amenities during the steering committee meeting for the comp plan was putting a dog park near 64, near Stony Creek Environmental Park. And a dog park is a fenced-in public park allowing dogs to socialize with other dogs without a leash in a safe environment. This location near Stony Creek was chosen because with its proximity to the park, it benefits Nashville residents. With its proximity to 64, we're also benefiting dog-friendly travelers using Highway 64. The property owner, Wayne Land, was contacted about the idea and offered to donate the 1.84 acre parcel of land to the town for the purpose of a dog park. There's a signed memorandum of understanding in your packet going over the terms of that donation. Rose Oil Company was also contacted regarding the 80-foot by 140-foot grassy area right in front of the car wash, which adjoins Mr. Land's property, has the animal statues in it currently. And we were informed by Trey Watkins, who's the vice president of Rose Oil Company, that a, the property could be leased long-term at little to no cost to the town. That agreement has not been drafted. The reason we looked at that area is so we would be able to do a separate area for small and large dogs. That decreases the town's liability having it set up that way, and it increases your visibility from Washington Street for, not just the dog park, but for Stony Creek Environmental Park as a whole. Dog parks, they can be as simple as a fenced-in, open area with signage, or they can be more, more complex, including shelters, benches, agility equipment, water fountains, et cetera. To fund this project, staff and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board requested the town council consider delaying the zip line and reallocating those funds towards the dog park. So what we're here asking council to consider is to approve the memorandum of understanding with Mr. Wayne Land for the donating the 1.84 acres, as well as to pursue a long-term lease with Rose Oil Company for the land for the small dog area. And lastly, to consider-
I have a question.
Ms. Mayor.
The small dog park, is that part of Wayne Land's, or is that?
No, that we don't.
That's the part the man released.
It was a concern that was brought up at the Parks and Rec meeting when talking about this, going into these long-term leases, you know, not really having ownership of the property. So I think a happy solution could be to start with the, the donated property and see what we can do with that, possibly even making, you know, one large dog area, small dog area, maybe not as big as the ones that you have here, to utilize property that we own and we know we can continue to use in the future without investing. And it won't be that much, I don't think, for the fences and benches and things like that, but putting any investment on something that we don't actually own.
And we could certainly do that. There's other municipalities that only have one area. When we met with the lead just to discuss the liability associated with the dog park, that's just one of the things that lower that liability for the town is having those separate areas.
On 1.84 acres, couldn't you get two separate?
We would just have to do a lot of clearing of the trees and grading of the property, I think.
And just use a single line fence to make the separation between the two?
We'd have to do something that's a solid barrier, otherwise they'll just be at the fence the whole time.
My, my concern with that also, if you look at the way that land is laid out, a lot of, when that area does have a flooding event, a lot of the water flows back through this area straight to the creek.
Okay.
So this area gets a lot more flowing water than this area does. This is the last place to get water down there.
Well, we could always start with the one, and if it's very popular and people are using it, and it's a great investment, then we could pursue the long-term lease for the, the other.
And if it's reasonable, you know, we could just put a fence around there and not put a lot of-
Right, maybe not even delineate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would, I would, I would move that we go ahead and pursue the donated property and move forward that one and the one with the lease agreement. Let's just, let's just wait on that for right now, see where the first part goes.
I do have a question. In this memorandum, memorandum of understanding, is it, is this like the initial document that we're going to be going through? Is it going to be something that, that requires us to continue the maintenance of this? I'm just thinking, if we have flooding situations that worsen over the years, and this turns into, into something that's not sustainable, you know, we try a dog park for 10 years and three times our fence is knocked down, and we have to use insurance proceeds and, you know, our funds to keep rebuilding this, maybe we figure out this is not the ideal spot for it. What is, what is the expectation of the, the owner that's donating, donating it to us, and what are there are requirements?
And, and I haven't really discussed that with Mr. Land. I, I don't want to speak for him, but I feel confident that we could put some language in there.
Like as long as feasible, or something like that?
Sure.
I just feel like this needs more research and planning.
Well, I think if it's donated property-
Right. And we have the funding.
Right. And I think some of these things, like the agility course, you know, we can probably hold off on.
Hold off on that, yeah, yeah.
Just get a fence, you know, a bench, the, the waist, waistbag station.
Some water.
Keep it simple. Water, exactly.
Couple of hens.
It'll be better than what we have right now, which is nothing. And then we can always move forward with additional.
Yeah, it's certainly something that we can build over time, and, and if council chose to allocate that $23,000, that would be enough for us to, to do the land acquisition, to get the fencing up and some of those basic amenities. And then if we pursue funding through TDA and we're awarded that funding, we could start to get some of those additional amenities in that park.
Mayor, I have a motion on the floor that we pursue the donated property, move forward.
Second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and, thank you so much for all the work you've put into this.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Mayor, what about the zip line, reallocating that?
Yeah, we-
So-
Yeah, real, real-
Yeah, the intent, when we discussed it, was that we were gonna hold off on the zip line anyway to find the best spot after doing a master plan. So if that's going to be unused this year-
Do we need a vote to the-
If you would, maybe make another motion?
I would like to include to my motion that we do reallocate the funds for the zip line.
Okay. Second? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Thank you so much. Our next, let's go to our own business. The next item is the budget amendments, one through seven, and you have, good to see ya.
So I had presented the, this budget amendment as one, large budget amendment, last meeting. It was tabled. So I decided to split this up into seven separate budget amendments, so the council can consider each item individually. So the first budget amendment, budget's three hundred and forty-eight thousand of general fund. It's a general fund loan to the stormwater fund, and it's for the Windy Oak Drainage Project. So that was actually budgeted last fiscal year. The project was not complete, so we just need to re-budget for that.
Okay, I have a question.
Good.
Before, we had a figure of four twenty-six, and then four oh three. So now it's three forty-eight for the Windy Oaks.
I don't know where the four twenty-six came from.
Are you comparing the one that we received in the last one? Right, there was a typo in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was in the memo. This is the actual budget amount, the three hundred and forty-eight.
There was a, yeah, there was a typo in that original paperwork.
Okay, so, anyway, we had two different ones. Do you remember that, Randy?
So what was an original draft that shouldn't have been included in the, in the packet? You didn't receive the updated version. So that's what actually happened with that. So this is the updated version. So what you have today, what you've been presented today is the correct one, and it's three hundred and four, three hundred and forty-eight.
Do you want these approved separately, Sam?
It's up to.
I think we need to separately.
I move to approve the amendment.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
No.
So that's approved.
One no.
Oh, you said no?
I said no.
Okay, one no, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. And next?
Okay, budget amendment two, the budget's the state grant revenue in the amount of nine, ninety-two thousand, and the required town match in the amount of twenty-five thousand for the police governor's highway safety program grant, which was recently awarded. So with that grant, the town will hire a traffic officer with grant funds covering eighty-five percent of the cost in year one, fifty percent in year two, twenty-five percent in year three, and fully funded by the town in subsequent years.
This is one that we knew about. It's one that we agreed that we'd fund if we actually received the grant. I move that we approve this.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Okay, that one is approved.
Budget amendment three, budget's thirty thousand in general fund balance and twenty-one thousand in insurance proceeds to repair damages to town-owned public buildings.
Okay, indicates that it's twenty-nine five.
Is that the roof for the town hall?
Yes, it's various, it's town hall roof, a few things that are included in there.
Is it the library too, with the flooding?
It's the library, there's town hall.
Right, okay.
But so we've got insurance proceeds to cover that one.
Okay.
Library water damage due to the gutter leak, police fire complex roof repairs in the amount of ten thousand, some miscellaneous landscaping, a garage door, it was actually damaged last fiscal year, but the insurance proceeds weren't received until, well, we actually already received the proceeds last year. But the part needed to repair the door hasn't come in yet, so we can't do the project until this year. That's what those are.
Okay, on page thirty-eight, it indicates that it's twenty-nine five, not thirty thousand.
Twenty-nine five?
Mm-hmm, on page thirty-eight.
So when I just typed up, I, I just rounded for simpli, just to simplify the.
Okay, but we're voting on specific numbers.
So you're voting on this budget amendment right here?
You're voting on the budget amendment.
You're voting, you're voting on this page.
For example, in budget amendment one, I just simply wrote three hundred and forty-eight thousand rather than three hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, just to simplify.
If it's, yeah, if it's easier, we can go through these sheets to say amendment three.
Because it's more specific.
The budget amendment is for the twenty-nine thousand five hundred in fund balance, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I move to approve the amendment.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Carries, next budget number four.
Budget amendment four, budget's twenty-one point two-five thousand in police special revenue dollars for police programs, training, and equipment.
Do I hear a motion?
And this comes from the special fund?
Yes.
These are the controlled substance drugs amendments.
Yes, ma'am.
And they can only be used for police law enforcement purposes.
Move to approve?
Second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, next, number five.
Budget amendment five, real allocates unused funds in the enterprise fund for the purchase of needed equipment.
Uh, can you elaborate on needed equipment?
So the funds that we are proposing to reallocate were for a sewer meter that we had originally budgeted for a corporation in town that is no longer needed, because the corporation's actually gonna pay for that themselves. So we're requesting to purchase, well, part of it's to fund the increased cost of the vehicles. Vehicles are just coming in higher this year for a variety of reasons. Public Works would like to purchase a tapper machine and a pole cable, a thumper machine, a street saw, a sidearm mower for sewer easements, and create a new line item for fats, oils, and greases. We're just actually moving money from one place to another.
What, what is water vehicles?
Water vehicles?
Mm-hmm.
Where are you looking?
Is that our, is that that high-water rescue vehicle?
That's the, that is the vehicles line item, line item in the water department.
Okay, so that's more than one vehicle.
It's one vehicle. That's the line, that's the name of the line item.
That's just the name of the line item.
Oh, okay, okay.
So we budgeted forty thousand for the one vehicle. It actually costs forty-five, so we're looking at a five thousand dollar increase for the one.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this a truck?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to approve that?
Second.
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 All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Budget number six?
Budget amendment number six, budgets for the increased cost of the library's new I T. contract.
We all knew about that.
Move to approve. Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And number seven?
Last but not least, this budget amendment allocates donation to Parks and Rec for uniforms, program sponsorships, and supplies.
So we're into our fund balance of the ten of a million, three?
Yes, one point. Oh, oh, three, one point zero, zero, three.
Okay, so what is our fund balance?
So, at the end of last fiscal year, it's about five point five, so that brings you down to about four point five, a little less than four.
So we don't have anything specific? You can't give me a specific number?
That's, that's pretty close.
Hold on, we didn't do budget amendment number seven yet. So that's actually donations being received and a sponsorship being received.
Yeah, we did that.
You guys agreed it?
Yes.
Oh, never mind. Scratch that.
So have we approved them all now?
Could we get a specific number at some point?
Yes, yes. The four point five is quite, is pretty close to accurate.
Okay, thank you so much.
We will, excuse me, Sam, before you leave, when will our audit be presented, is that on schedule to be done before Christmas?
I will be able to give you an update soon on that. We're still in the middle of.
Because the audit financial statements is what we will rely on for the, the final fund balance amount as of June thirty, two thousand twenty-one.
But based on all the expenditures, everything that I know, all the information, it's, we ended up at five point five last fiscal year, so with this addition of one point, one million, which I'm, I am, you know, I've closely monitored revenues so far, so far they're coming in well, so it'll be close to about four point five. It's a pretty accurate number this time.
Thank you. Our next item on our agenda is farmer's market lease at the National Junction, Randy?
So we had, we had some changes since the farmer's lease was put into the packet last Thursday, and what I passed out is on green paper, and the red text is, is what's been added or tweaked, minor things, some changes in the date. Paragraph two, changes the lease shall commence the date of execution and end March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. We wanted to have a full two-year lease. We're beginning about eight months after we originally thought we might get going. Paragraph three adds the word a venue for farmer's market and other activities, and that language then has been used throughout this agreement and the inducement agreement. And it also says that commencement of rent will be March first, or upon completion of the upfits to the buildings that will be part of the farmer's market venue. And it says that if those aren't done till after March first, then whatever month they do, are available, we will prorate that first month. Paragraph four then says the landlord, at the landlord's expense, shall do the following improvements and shall be completed approximately March one, two thousand twenty-two. And those are to concrete the floor of the two outbuildings, install the electrical outlets, install lighting and, and switching for it, install two large ceiling fans in each of the, the buildings, install a weatherized PVC roll-up and roll-down sides on, on the two buildings, and demolish the third building. That's the largest of the two that are there. And paragraph five, then, the changes, it still had leftover language in there about holding pop-up farmer's markets until we can't commence a full farmer's market. That, that's out. I mean, we're at this point, we're October already, so our ability to do that and the fact that the buildings aren't up for it yet, so we just struck that language out altogether, which Michael Hurt is, is, is okay with. And that, again, the tenant shall commence farmer's market on the premises approximately March first and continue for the remainder of, of the agreement. And then that last sentence, that the landlord wanted to be able to use the facility when the town isn't, so there's a provision in here that with prior consent of the tenant, which is the town, the landlord may utilize the lease, the leased area when the property is not in use by the tenant for, for use, with that consent not being unreasonably withheld. And Kate, I think you did have one thing.
Right. In there, we have March first, two thousand twenty-two. It should be May first, two thousand twenty-two, because although we're commencing the lease, we're not starting the farmer's market until May.
When do we start paying?
We start paying in March. We're doing an April opening event, so we need to be able to prep for that April event for strawberry season, and then we'll have the, and with other vendors, but we'll have a full-blown farmer's market May one.
So Michael Hurt did review these changes this afternoon, and he is agreeable to them.
Are there any questions in the council? We really don't need to approve this because we've already done it.
Well, this is the actual lease agreement.
Right, but I think these were changes that we made.
So do we need to approve it with these?
You, you do.
Because I knew we'd already approved it one time, you know.
Well, the inducement agreement has been agreed to.
Right.
Which is up now.
Okay, excuse me, do I hear a motion that we approve the lease for the farmer's market?
I move to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Everybody's really excited about our farmer's market, so I pray it'll work out and be great.
And I'm, and I'm glad we extended the date back for, for the, the pavilion, which I don't think we need to put that out front right now. We've moved it back for another year, so that gives us some time to see how it's gonna really work out. We could use a pop-up stage in the entrance.
And, good.
To see how it works out.
Good, yeah, I think so, too. The next is the National Junction Inducement Agreement, which, that's what we've approved, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but this cleans it up.
Okay, good. Okay, we want it clean.
So this, this is the inducement agreement, and, and section one there, again, we wanted to, the purpose of an inducement agreement is to reach an ultimate goal with, with another party. And they're, they're usually somewhat flexible, so we wanted to put through here that any hard dates had projected or approximate, you know, more, more goals to work for than, than dead fast, stop dead dates. So paragraph one, it says Hurt shall purchase the building and real estates of the formal building supply on Barn Street by, projected by August first, two thousand twenty-one. Well, he's already accomplished that. That, that one's come and gone. And section two, that Hurt will subdivide the property into two parcels, one for the junction and farmer's market, and then the other, the, the north part of the property, for, for the town to build on it, the parking lot, the events pavilion, and the green space slash audience area. And again, the word projected is put there by December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-one. And that, that's very doable. Section three, paragraph three, the change was Mr. Hurt's upfitting of the building, that he will have that ready-go approximately October one of two thousand twenty-two. Now, he, he wants to have it all rehabbed and fully leased up well before then, but you know, this gives a little time. Section four then talks about the farmer's market lease, that, you know, the, the east half of the south part of that property on parcel one will be leased to the town for a venue for farmer's market and other activities for two consecutive years, and that the lease shall be executed by Hurt and the town by approximately October thirty-first of two thousand twenty-one. And then the language that was in here about the town actually leasing that property long-term, ninety-nine year, at, at the August meeting, Mr. Hurt agreed that once the parking lot, pavilion, and grassy audience area was built, that he would then, he would then quit claim deed or donate the property to the town. So all that language was struck out of there, and there's a note here that the attorney put in, Mark Edwards, see Exhibit A., which is attached here, too, which kind of gives some of the terms of that donation. Then paragraph five talks about the upfitting of the two outbuildings for the farmer's market. It added to the improvements of concrete floor, lights, outlets, and ceiling fans, the insulation of the weatherized PVC pull-down sides on the two sheds, and it also moved into there that the third outbuilding has to be taken down. All of that projected by March first of two thousand twenty-two. And then that the payment of the rent on the venue shall commence the latter of March one, two thousand twenty-two, or the completion of the upfits. Six says that provided the town leases the venue by March one, two thousand twenty-two, the town shall commence a seasonal farmer's market and other activities on the property projected by May one, two thousand twenty-two. The changes to paragraph seven then, the town shall construct on parcel two, at its own expense, the parking lot, the events pavilion, and the grassy area, audience area, construction of those shall is estimated to be completed, well, the construction of the parking lot and the green space is estimated to be completed by July of two thousand twenty-two. Construction of the pavilion is estimated to be completed by July thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three, the following year. And then we added to that a further clarification that upon completion of the parking lot, the green space audience area, and the pavilion, Hurt shall convey ownership of that property to the town, and prior to the town, beginning the above improvements, a separate agreement on the terms of the land donation from Hurt to the town will be executed. So when we went through this Exhibit A. that our attorney put to it, we thought was a little weak, needed further clarification, a little more, a little more detail. So that's what that last sentence does. It says that before we commence those, we will have a, an, an additional agreement that further lays out the terms of that donation. You know, one of them, Michael was, wanted to make sure that the property, after those facilities are built upon it, are appraised, and then.
And we want to make sure that we get reimbursement in full for any expenditure on the property if anything goes south, where we're not exactly given the property as we expected.
And those things will be furthered in that additional agreement. And then number, number eight, they put an approximate on the date for Mr. Hurt to petition annexation of those two parcels into the town's municipal service district, and gives us the town until January one of two thousand twenty-three to actually incorporate those in and get them as part of the record. January 1 of 2023 to actually incorporate those in and get them as part of the record. So those were the changes. Again, Michael Hurt had a chance to review these this afternoon, and he is agreeable to them.
Granted, on the exhibit that's attached to this, I think the one that Ms. Burns put up, the last sentence there said, "The motion passed with all council members voting in favor, except for Councilmember Hinton. The vote went two to one. All council members did not vote. I was not here that night." So I think that needs to be put into this. I didn't vote yes or no either way. I wasn't here.
Right. This is an excerpt from the minutes. The previous paragraph said you weren't there.
But it says all council members.
Yeah.
All weren't there.
So Sarah and I did talk about that, and we can make sure that this Exhibit A has that added to it.
All right. Thank you.
Although the additional agreement that's coming before we commence is going to clarify this Exhibit A in much more detail.
Got you. Okay.
So do we need?
If you guys are agreeable, these changes, a motion to second to approve is in order.
Do I hear a motion that we agree to these changes?
Some of.
Seven.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Great. Our next item is the Cardinal Woods subdivision construction plat. Sherri Moss.
Good afternoon, everyone. So before you tonight, we have the proposed Cardinal Woods subdivision that's located behind Nash Central Middle School. Attached for approval is the construction plat, CP 2021-02, for the Cardinal Woods subdivision. It's a 246-lot, single-family residential subdivision off Glover Park Memorial Drive, District's multifamily and R10 medium-density residential. Starlight Homes is a division of Ashton Woods, Raleigh, North Carolina, is the developer of this subdivision. The subdivision is on a 118-acre, is located on 118 acres, identified by Nash County Tax PIN number 380016745123. And approximately 89 acres will be developed for the proposed subdivision. The subdivision will take place in three phases, as it will be shown, what we have is shown on the projector. The planning board reviewed the construction plat, and it's September 29, planning board meeting. And also on August 19, the TRC held a meeting, and the bulleted items that you see, this were information that were concluded from that meeting. And on, I'm sorry, September 23, a neighborhood meeting was held, and concerns from both the neighborhood meeting and the planning board meeting were concerns of increased traffic on Essex Road, school traffic and safety, improvements to Essex Road, and adequate public services to accommodate the proposed subdivision, as well as rainstorm, water runoff. Also, the Essex Road community submitted a petition to the planning board prior to the meeting, and you have that in your packet as well. So the following attachments that are included in your agenda packet, you have your major construction plat review checklist, and you also have a construction plat, which is on page 61. And just a minor correction on the lot table, where you have, it shows all the lots, identifies the lots and the lot sizes. Lot 103 on the table, I believe, was like 9,000 or something, but the actual site plan is actually 10,988 square feet. So I just wanted to add that into the record. You also have your area map and your zoning map on pages 84 and 85, as well as on page 87, you have your TRC comments with the responses. And with regards to the TRC comments and responses, the applicant is receiving, is requesting waivers for numbers 1, 2, 3, and 10, with number 1 being the waiver from curb and gutter, 2 is the request waiver for the street center line, reducing it from 100 to 90 feet radius, at one horizontal curve along Surrey Drive, the proposed Surrey Drive, and pond overlook drive. And the third one is a request, is requesting a waiver for the street block length, in which they will be added in green ways to separate that. And also, number 10, the waiver is for the five-foot-wide drainage around the easement of each perimeter of each lot. And also, and number eight on page 87, in the TRC comments, just a minor, so the response where has we are incorporating a southbound 100 left turn lane is actually a right turn lane.
Right.
And also, continuing in your packet, you have your NC DOT letter, followed by the analysis with the recommendation of that 100-foot right turn lane, which is also shown on your site plan on C205. And you also have the Essex Road community petition with 21, I believe it's 21 signatures. And you have your email from Nash County Schools of the construction of drop-off and pickup, I said propose, propose drop-off and pickup lane for Nash Central Middle School, and along with your planning board recommendation. So I'm just going to briefly read the planning board and manager's recommendations, to accept the planning boards and planning staff recommendations to approve the construction plat and additional recommendations from the planning board, were improvements to be made to Essex Road conditions. Number two, make communications with Nash County School Board for a better parking plan for staff and buses for Nash Central Middle School. Three, make the Glover Park Memorial Drive the same weather at the front entrance and throughout, with a commitment to get the traffic under control. And we also have Bob Michler here from Ashton Woods.
Bob, would you like to speak at this time to anything?
Mayor Brown, members of the council, appreciate your time. My name is Bob Michler with Ashton Woods and Starlight Homes. And I also have Shane Leathers with Bateman Civil Survey is here to answer any more technical questions that I may or may not be able to answer. So Sherri, from the Sherri, I appreciate the packet. I'm sure it's very complete. It's more technical in nature, and what I would like to do is take a few moments and offer some of the more thoughtful considerations that go into the initial design and planning of a subdivision like this. And so one of the very first considerations that we look at are environmental. The first thing that I release is an environmental study over the whole property. So the property is completely walked. We test any farmlands, we test any debris piles. These are testing the soils for contaminants, debris, heavy metals, anything like that. Oftentimes, we'll test creek, standing water, groundwater. One of the other issues that we look at are, of course, buffers, wetlands, and creeks. We have to stay off of those. They have to be delineated, and we cannot impact those. So we have to stay well off of those. And we also need to treat or to clean the water prior to it leaving our site and entering that wetland area or those creeks. And so in doing those initial assessments of the property, we arrived at the need to develop with ditch-lined streets. And that creates a lesser or a lower-impact subdivision. It reduces the impervious, and it allows us to channel water through those ditch lines, which are well vegetated with grasses, and to clean up that water prior to it ever entering the stormwater ponds, where it's then treated even more so before it's released into the creek area. Shane could speak to the state mandate with regard to how that has to be done, but from my understanding, we are meeting, and in most cases, we're exceeding the state minimum requirements for that. One of the drawbacks that can happen with a ditch-lined street is walkability in the neighborhood. You've all seen ditch-lined neighborhoods where your people are walking in the streets. So what we're doing is we're putting a sidewalk in, and we also have walkways, walking trails throughout the neighborhood as well. So from any home in the neighborhood, you will be able to walk through the neighborhood into the walking trails, into the school, or to the park area. One of the other items that showed up during this environmental site assessment was the cemetery. And so we took that opportunity to create a green swath through, kind of through, cut through the top third of the neighborhood. And that'll have a walking trail through there. We'll clean up the cemetery, of course. There'll be a parking area there, and the folks that have, folks in that cemetery could visit that cemetery if they liked. Throughout the subdivision, there's a few pocket parks. They are not huge, but they are areas where people can stop along these walking trails. There'll be some benches, some seating areas where folks can stop, sit, hang out, and meet with their friends and neighbors. And I guess the last thing I'd like to say is that to keep all of that looking good and to keep all of that in good repair, the neighborhood will be managed by a homeowners' association. It's not only a homeowners' association, which has a board and a president that are residents of this neighborhood, but there's a management company that will manage the finances, manage the repair work, the maintenance of the stormwater ponds, and with that comes a declaration and guidelines. So if somebody wants to put up a fence, there's two styles. You've got a black aluminum fence, or you've got a privacy fence. With the privacy route, you're going to have to stain it a certain color, so you don't have chain link, you don't have mismatched fences throughout the neighborhood. Somebody wants to put up a storage building, that's great, but it'll need to be in a particular place on the property. It's got to look like the house, same type of siding, same type of roof, same type of trim work. All of those items are approved through me initially, and then, once we turn the neighborhood over to the homeowners' association, that association will make the determination whether or not those requests are allowed. Somebody wants to park a camper in the street, that's not going to happen. Somebody wants to park a construction trailer somewhere, that also is not going to happen. Those are not allowed. There's always concern in ditch-lined streets whether or not the ditch will remain functioning and will remain clear and clean. So as part of the declaration, it states that these ditch lines cannot be altered, such that the water flow cannot be impacted. So if it's a 2% slope, it needs to remain a 2% slope. If it's an open ditch, it needs to remain an open ditch. Can't fill it in, can't make your yard flat, you've got a ditch there for a purpose, and that's to transfer the stormwater runoff from that property to the stormwater ponds. That's also in the declaration. So if someone's not mowing it, someone's not taking care of it, then they're going to get a letter, they're going to get a more strict letter, and they're going to get fined, or the work's going to get done, and they'll be charged for that, and a lien will be put on the house. So we leave the neighborhood to that homeowners' association flush with cash. We charge an initial capital contribution fee for every home that's sold, and that money goes into a reserve account for, if there's a, over and above what is typical maintenance, if there's a major issue or a major problem, they'll have that funds. They're also well-trained with regard to how to review a request that somebody has and how to manage that process. All of that is overseen by the HOA management company anyways, the funding, the financing, the budget, and the contracts for the maintenance and all of those type of things. So that's about it with regard to what I had to offer. Again, Shane and I are here, and we'll answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, do you have any questions for them?
I just wanted you to elaborate a little further, since someone had brought up wetlands and preservation, and I know you did go above and beyond to preserve wetland and to preserve green space and to preserve existing trees, as well as planting of new street trees. So if you could just go through that, maybe even point to the map where those things are.
Okay, Shane, you want to jump up and help me out here with regard to, on the bottom portion of this slide? Here we go. Thank you. You can see where the creek is. You can also see where the wetland delineation is. And of course, our lots have to stay outside of that. So Shane, if you could cut.
First, to point out the environmental, this is all wetlands. It's all been delineated, you're staying out of that. This is a stream that's following the creek. This is actually following the property line, and we're all staying out of that. That wetland keeps on going in the bottom of the site. There's an additional wetland environmental area going down this property line. We're all staying out of that. Additional tree save areas, we're maintaining these trees. Additional trees back in here, additional trees here. All of this will be trees that have been saved, all of this is good trees that have been saved, additional tree save area down in this corner. These are the park areas that Bob was talking through. This is along Greenway Trail with the cemetery, additional pocket park area, and then an additional pocket park area here. On top of that, we're providing greenways and stuff to all these inroads, additional greenway there, additional greenways here, and a little more of this painting, additional greenways here. They help tie it together, so it's a little walkability. There's additional wetland area and stream area that's going down this property line. It's all delineated, it's hanging out. It's all the farmer's, the local government, and the state.
Can you elaborate a little bit more on the, what you're going to do, or plan to do, to alleviate some of the concerns that we have with the traffic that will be going in onto Essex Road?
Larry, may I ask one final question related to stormwater before we move to your question? I think I heard this, but just to verify, how many stormwater retention ponds were you planning?
Three.
Three stormwater retention ponds?
Yes, there are three. And to hit part of your question with regard to street trees, it's, I don't know the distance between street trees, but there are street trees on both sides of the street, correct? There's the, I believe that's a landscape layout we were pulling up there.
What is that? I redid these, yeah. There it is.
This is the landscape plan. There's the street trees. And John.
Those dots there are the street trees.
What kind of trees are going to be planted there? And how tall will they end up being?
You have two non-landscape architects in front of you right now. It's specified, if Shane can read that.
Those are the canopy trees right now. They are elm trees.
Who?
Elm.
Elm trees, okay.
So did you want to go through stormwater next? Just the specifics of it, what the state requires, and how they're going to make sure that no flooding occurs, or do you want to go to Larry's question of traffic?
What would you like?
The traffic.
Okay. So the, one of the concerns was construction traffic and just overall traffic on Essex. And so we committed during the public meeting, and we also committed during the planning board, that we would provide a temporary barrier at Essex, where Essex connects to our neighborhood. And we would also put signs, wherever we are allowed to put signs, on Essex that say no construction traffic. And so we'll funnel all construction traffic down Glover Park Memorial Drive, and we'll leave those, that barrier up for a period of time until it's asked.
Wow, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I was not speaking into the mic. Sorry about that. So we had committed to providing a temporary. There you go. So we have committed to providing a temporary barricade where Essex meets our neighborhood, and then also providing signage that say no construction traffic on Essex, at the entrance of Essex. And then we, what we do with our project managers is we instruct our contractors not to use Essex. First time they do it, and they find out that there's a temporary barricade there, they're not going to do that again anyways. And so that was a verbal commitment that we made, and I think we need to get that more than just verbal. So I had something that I've just typed up that might, may suffice, or you might So I had something that I've just typed up that might, may suffice, or you might want to tweak it, I don't, I'm not sure. So would you like me to read this?
That would be nice.
Okay, this is the proposed conditions for temporary barricade. Essex Road connection. The developer will temporarily, temporarily barricade the Essex Road connection and direct construction and resident traffic to Glover Park Memorial Drive until the town of Nashville directs the developer to remove the barricade, or, and I put a timeframe on this, and we can change this, or the completion of Phase Two of the development. The developer will continue to restrict construction traffic on Essex Road throughout the build-out of the development. Where should I hand this?
To Randy.
Start it over. Sorry?
Sure. The developer will temporarily barricade the Essex Road connection and direct construction and resident traffic to Glover Park Memorial Drive until the town of Nashville directs the developer to remove the barricade or the completion of Phase Two of the development. The developer will continue to restrict construction traffic on Essex Road throughout the build-out of the development.
So you mentioned, uh, construction and residential traffic until Nashville has taken care of their problems with Essex Road, the development.
Until Nash, until Nashville directs the developer to remove the barricade.
Or completion of Phase Two.
Phase Two.
What happens after Phase Two?
The temporary barricade would come down.
Well, you mean it comes, the traffic didn't come through?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what they're saying, what I'm saying, the planning board said nothing, they put the recommendation here, said nothing happened on our street until Essex Road finished. So now, how do those two guys, how do those two come together? You made us forget that. How they don't bear that recommendation?
Randy, what's the planning board's recommendation with regard to Essex Road's improvements?
It says just to improve, improvements be made to Essex Road's conditions.
Right.
That's what the planning board recommended.
Yeah.
And sort of the improvement that it's saying to you?
Well, well, the improvements, if, if I may, you know, we had in our, our 2022 fiscal year plan to resurface Essex Road. In light of the fact that the town's pursuing the extension of a sewer construction project that will rip up a good portion of Essex Road, we, the council decided to postpone that until after that sewer construction project is finished. Once that's finished, and all those cuts through are patched and repaired, then-
We're concerned.
We will come and overlay the street with a new street surface.
And what is the timeframe for that?
The timeframe for that, the CBPG grant application has been submitted. We should know in March if it gets funded. If it does, we can have a construction contract with our engineer in place by May with the construction plans, and, and the project bid out for construction by August, and the actual construction done by Septa-, I'm, I'm sorry, December or January of 2023.
And then the road will be paved?
Paved, yes.
Yes.
And as far as your Phase Two timeline, what year are we looking at?
Well beyond that.
Well beyond that.
Yeah, we've got a, roughly a 49-month build-out-
Uh-huh.
-to 2007, and we are 18 months from starting construction.
Okay.
And all of this is included in this package that y'all have confronted? So we won't have no problem with this, that's what we're concerned about. Y'all saying this, but it's included, we want to be covered.
And we want you covered. We want every citizen in Nashville to be taken care of, and we do have the recommendations where the-
... option for construction traffic, we go between the existing school and the park. We've already heard about the traffic concerns in and around the park and school.
That is not, I mean, that's already been discussed, you know, and in the plan and everything, so that's-
I think, yeah, the park traffic is only on weekends, we're not going to speak construction then, and I think that the, we've had professionals that I, eventually, at the end of the day, I'm not a traffic analyst, I, I'm not the DOT, we have to be able to rely on our specialists, and we've had two, you know, we've had the, the traffic impact analysis done, and then we've had the review of the traffic impact analysis by the DOT that says that this is a viable project that will not have-
Yeah, everybody that's running who lives in that area, we just need that. It's, it's a dangerous area, it's happening. If we, we allow it to happen, somebody will sooner or later get hurt, and then we're going to be responsible.
Six, five, it was more than a dozen cars parked in Glover Memorial Drive from the park.
Thank you so much. Okay, council, you've heard, any more questions for him?
Uh, if we've moved-
I do have another condition-
Okay.
-with regard to the planning board's recommendation for the improvement to Glover Park Memorial Drive.
Okay.
And I'll read that now, and then I can give this to Randy, and y'all can tweak it as necessary. The developer will extend their portion of Glover Park Memorial Drive approximately 325 linear feet at a pavement width of 28 feet. Currently, our neighborhood street is 28 feet wide. Glover Park, where it meets our property line, is 20 feet wide or so, and then it widens as it gets to the school and to the park parking lot entrance. So we will continue the same width that we currently have, we'll widen-
To connect to that other park?
That's right. So the, the developer will extend their portion of Glover Park Memorial Drive approximately 325 linear feet at a pavement width of 28 feet toward the east, and match up with the existing pavement width of greater width, which I believe is 36 or 38 feet. The pavement section will match the section proposed within the development, including roadside swales. The developer, the developer will complete the installation of the improvements. This is kind of an offline discussion, this next part that is, has not been agreed to by planning board or council. The town of Nashville and the developer will enter into a cost-share agreement for 50% of the total construction cost of the improvements. The cost-share agreement will include design, testing, permitting, and construction. The developer will complete the installation prior to the completion of Phase Three of the development. That's a condition that we're offering to-
Can you just explain that last-
-improve a town street.
That last portion again? So this is still with regard to Glover Memorial?
Which portion?
The 50/50 cost share?
The town of Nashville and the developer will enter into a cost-share agreement for 50% of the total construction cost of the improvements. The cost-share agreement will include design, testing, permitting, and construction. The developer will complete the installation prior to the completion of Phase Three of the development.
Now, we have not discussed a 50/50 shared property on, on that, so that's, that's-
That's what he said.
That's correct.
That's what he said.
And 28, 28 feet, how many, how many lanes of traffic is that?
Two.
28 feet, only two lanes?
Yes. That's what's in our, that's what we have in our development, and we were just trying to continue that out.
Continue it all the way out?
Yeah. And it was, the reason we were offered this up was because of the, uh, planning board wanted that to be improved. It's a town street, it's not our, it's not our street, it's not within our requirements to do so, but we, we're just offering up the fact that we'll use our crews, and, and we would like to enter into a cost-share agreement instead of footing the-
If Nashville, if we agree.
100%. If, if Nashville would agree to that.
And Bob, what is that distance?
325 feet.
So what would that cost look like?
Yeah.
I did, uh, I ran a kind of preliminary estimate with the numbers that I'm getting these days, and it's about 87,000.
Split in two, or?
Split two. No, that's the total, 87.
That's the total?
It's 40, it's 44,000.
Okay. And so, the concern that I had was the current condition of Glover Park Memorial Drive, and what it will require to get it to the proper condition to where it can be accepted and then maintained by the town. I don't know what that condition is. I know what we're dealing with is dirt, and so it's easy for us to price that up and determine what that is. I believe, I'm not sure Shane, how much you accounted for current condition, or if you just were adding four feet?
Like, four feet plus this complete overlap.
Okay. So if it's decent, and it's been, from my understanding, heavily traveled with bus traffic, then it would be, uh, four feet on both sides to the, to the street spec that's necessary, and then a complete overlay.
Any other questions from the council?
I have a question from the county council on the same situation. Can I speak?
Do we need name at the podium?
Yeah, we, you have to give your name and your address at the podium.
My name is Ann Richardson, and I live on Surrey Drive. I understand that you're going to pay exit, and Surrey Drive goes right into, well, exit into Surrey. Are you all going to pay that part, or you going to leave us looking tacky?
We're doing the best we can with the money that we have.
Uh-huh.
And we're trying to start off with the streets that are in the worst condition, and, and overlaying those, and then moving from there. And I'm not an expert on streets, but someone that's supposed to, no streets have, they've gone around town and looked at them. Is, am I correct, Randy, on that?
Yeah, when we do Essex Road, Surrey Drive's also going to be overlaid.
That's what I thought.
Okay, what about, okay, you said in the last meeting that you're going to do away with the weight station?
The lift station.
The lift station, and you're going to let the grass grow up there?
From, from where the two properties that use that lane?
Uh-huh.
That's going to stay there.
Oh, you're going to leave it a dirt path?
It, it is what it is.
But we pay taxes?
It's a private driveway.
Since when?
It's on land owned by the town of Nashville, and those two properties access and use that. I assume there's an easement agreement on the town's property for those two abutting property owners to use that.
When a town is taking care of it?
Yeah, because we needed to to get to the lift station. We won't have to after this, because the lift station won't be there anymore.
So what, what my neighbors need to do is come back forth for y'all and get their little street paved?
Well, it's not a street, again, it's, it's a private driveway.
How else do they access their properties?
They drive down Surrey Drive, they turn into lane going to the lift station-
Dirt road.
And then their lanes branch off that and go to their driveways.
Dirt road, but they pay taxes, maybe they need to come and, and do that. But I just want to know about exit, if you're going to, about, uh, Surrey, you're going to do exit-
And Surrey.
And Surrey, that's fine, you won't be leaving us looking tacky.
No.
Thank you, 'cause we pay taxes, and I'm just wondering, 'cause all these years I've been paying taxes, ain't nothing going on down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions concerning the development of the Cardinal Woods subdivision?
Was Larry's question on traffic sufficiently answered?
I guess to the extent that he can.
Can we talk about the retention ponds, and just what the state requirements are, and how you're meeting them to make sure that no neighboring properties are impacted negatively by any runoff?
This is in the Tarpamaco Basin, therefore, we're required to have the 50-foot repairing buffers, uh, keeping the wetlands. And as part of those requirements of that Tarpamaco Basin, we have to meet both nutrient requirements and detention requirements. You know, in our current model, say, the nutrient requirements could be met with dry ponds. Dry ponds just slow the water down and let it go back out. There's not as much treatment in it as a wet pond. And in our proposal, we're actually going to propose wet ponds. It's a little more efficient system, they help reduce the nutrients down even more, and they're going to provide more detention. And with detention requirements, we're retired, we're required to follow one, the one-year, 24-hour rain event, which is a large rain event, and we also have to do an impact analysis downstream, which will probably be at the Culvert. That's, I forget that road, but those are the main requirements. As of right now, we exceed those, just both with nitrogen and detention, um, just specific to that, that one-year, 24-hour requirement.
Okay, so testing is done before and after to ensure that whatever impervious surfaces are put there do not negatively impact downstream properties?
Correct. We have to analyze each drainage basin as it sits today, and come up with a flow for both the, you know, for that, that storm event, and that detention, our current runoff off of those basins, then we have to do, do our work and put in those detention basins to get that flow back to that or reduce it. So that is the staple.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
Do you have any historical information about how that area, the wetland area, especially around the creek, held up during Hurricane Floyd and Matthew?
No, none of that's been shared. I'm aware that some aerials show that there's, used to be a pond through there, but now it's been drained, and I guess were breached, I should say, and there's a, a stream going through there, but it's all just been wet ones now, so.
Any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion that we approve the development, that there are the Cardinal Woods?
I think the recommendation that was read to us is slightly different than the recommendation that we're looking at in our packets as far as what conditions we want to place on here. If we do approve it, I would say take the recommendations of the planning board, but also add, and I think this is in the one that was read to us, comply with the recommendation of the traffic impact analysis and the DOT recommendation, but also something that was spoken to by you, I'd like to incorporate that as well into a condition where your HOA documents, the declaration, that it would specify that the drainage ditches cannot be altered, but two, that the individuals must maintain it, and if the individuals don't, that the HOA will eventually do so.
Yes, there's absolutely no problem that that's currently in our declaration-
Right.
Perfect.
Existing declarations.
Okay.
So that will be added as well.
So those are just additional conditions that I would want.
Do I hear a motion at this time to approve this development?
That the Cardinal Woods, with the stipulations that the planning board, when they approved it, said that we make?
Mayor, for lack of a, a motion to, to go forward with this, I would like for us to just kind of table this for right now, so we can go through this, go through this package a little bit more, and, and, and look at some of it.
The one, yeah, the one I would like to further mull over is your number three, which is to share the cost of Glover Memorial Drive. So I wouldn't mind tabling this.
Yeah, let's table this so we can look at this more.
One meeting, just to discuss that, see what that would look like.
Is your, your question is with regard to sharing, or not sharing, or not having us do any of that improvement, since it's a town street anyways?
Right, so I guess the improvement you would make based for your subdivision would be in the meeting of Glover Memorial Drive, correct? I'm trying to pull it up on a map. Of what's town and what would be yours.
Once you pass the school, Glover Park Memorial Drive parking lot-
Yes.
The road narrows to about 20 feet.
Right, okay, I see that.
So what we would do is bring that up to the same width that is in our, our street design.
Right, which basically would start right where that road ends.
Yes.
Okay, so we're talking about that smaller sliver. Um, we, I've just never approved anything with a cost sharing, or even talked about street improvements on town-owned streets, so it's up to you all, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind mulling it over for one more meeting, but I also don't want to hold you up at all. I think this is a wonderful project.
Well, you said you were 18 months out anyway, right?
Um, from the yes vote.
So we do have time to look at this a little bit more, and I've got another question for you that I need to discuss later.
Okay.
I'd move that we table it for right now.
Is there a date that we would, we would come back?
The, the next meeting.
The next meeting.
Our next meeting.
Well, the, the October 19th, you're probably not going to have a full council for that meeting, so you may want to look at your first meeting in November.
Okay.
Would that be? Would that be okay with your schedule?
Our schedule gets bumped around quite often, so it's, uh...
It would be November second.
November second.
Something we deal with.
Can you work around with that?
I will. I will.
I move that we table this in our November second meeting, so we could explore this package a little bit deeper.
Is November second Election Day?
November second's Election Day, it is.
It is.
That's the first Tuesday, huh?
Right.
Yep, it's Election Day.
I can be here.
We may wanna consider moving our meeting from the second to...
To the third.
The third.
We have, we have done that in the past.
Yeah.
Let me, let me, um, offer something up. If we remove the cost share, and we are given permission by the town to do the improvements without the cost share, would we be able to move forward this evening? Is that, is that...
I would feel comfortable moving forward if...
I mean, that, I understand that the, the sticking point with us saying, hey, we're gonna do some work, we just want some money. I understand that sticking point. The reason that we had offered that to begin with is because it's not our responsibility, nor is it our street, and so we just wanted, um, some buy-in, so to speak, with regards to that. But if that would, if that would, if we remove the cost share, and we did the design, the permitting, and the construction and testing of the three hundred and twenty-five feet, um, in-house, by the completion of Phase Three, would that, would that move us along?
That makes the difference for me. I, I know the town is going to take care of Essex and Surrey as far as the conditions of the, the road.
Right.
We're gonna put that sewer, you know, implementation in. Um, I'm confident that the school will improve its traffic where it is. Um, we've had the superintendent meet, we've been in contact with Nash County, um, going through all the, the proper avenues and steps to make sure that everyone is, um, good with what the traffic situation will be. The traffic impact analysis was done, the Department of Transportation already reviewed it. Um, the improvements to Glover Park, if you will take care of those, that definitely helps that street. Um, and then just adding in the two that I had, um, spoken of with doing the recommendation of the turning lane from the impact analysis, um, and also just the HOA declaration, I would move that we approve.
Would you put that into a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, um, our next item on our agenda is the, um, the Bradford Place subdivision. So, uh, Sherri, are you gonna handle that?
Okay, the item before you now is the Bradford Place subdivision for proposed final plat twenty-twenty-one dash zero-two, where as Four Seasons Contracting has submitted the final plat for the Bradford Place subdivision, Phase One, for approval. The Bradford Place subdivision is a forty-one lot major subdivision off East Point Avenue, zoning District R4, high-density residential. This parcel contains approximately twenty-five point six-three acres, and is identified by Nash County Tax PIN number three-eight-one-zero-zero-six-four-eight four-five-one-nine-U. The planning board has reviewed the final plat. It was, um, reviewed at their September twenty-ninth planning board meeting, and they're recommending, recommending approval of the final plat for this subdivision pending receipt of a performance bond or irrevocable letter of credit in the amount of fifteen hundred and twenty-five, hundred and twenty-five percent of the cost of the unfinished sidewalks and fence and tree buffer along the food line property line. These items were required by the council at the nine-one twenty-twenty approval of the Bradford Place construction plat, construction of a fence and tree buffer behind the subdivision and the food line, and replacement of a two-foot-wide grass buffer between the curb and sidewalk. In your packet, you have your minor, I'm sorry, your major subdivision final plat review checklist, your bonding requirements, your two pages of the final plat, area map, the construction plat approval letter from September first twenty-twenty, the approved construction plat, and your planning board recommendation.
Are there any questions, um, from the council about this? I noticed that they have the lights up for that back area. I saw it when I went food line and looked back. Any questions?
No, mine was answered with the, um, you know, the bond amount.
Yeah, they estimate the unfinished sidewalk and fence total seventy-three thousand, and they brought in a check today for ninety-one thousand six hundred and forty-one, which is one hundred and twenty percent. Um, we're gonna hold on to that check. They're expecting a surety bond from a bonding company in that same amount, and once we get that, we'll give it, we'll give the check back. So, the curb and gutter's in, the water and sewer's in, uh, the street's been paved, um, all the water meter boxes are in, the streetlights are being installed, and they wanna construct the sidewalks as they, as they pour the driveways for each, each house. And it, it seems like a reasonable request, considering the fact that they're gonna have heavy construction equipment backing up onto all those lots for the construction of the house. You would hate to see a brand-new sidewalk get crushed and broken with a heavy truck going over it.
My, one other, um, question, and I guess it's more of a specification with the fencing and the, um, tree buffers. I noticed the tree buffers weren't, uh, mentioned in the bond, which is fine, that'll be the least of their costs. Um, but it was also specified to be solid fencing during that initial meeting, so I just wanted to ensure that they're doing...
I think it is at thirty-five thousand dollars for a thousand feet.
Okay.
That's expensive fence, I think. I can, I can confirm that.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, that fence is gonna be almost as much as a sidewalk.
Sounds like PVC.
Yeah, Brandon, um, did we approve the final plat?
It has been motioned that we approve the, uh, final plat. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, so that's excellent. Um, so that covers our items for tonight. Uh, Randy, do you have anything for us?
I do not, Mayor, thank you.
Um, councilman, do you have any?
I have a few. I, I really want to applaud and thank everyone for coming out tonight. Um, I know it's, uh, an inconvenience to come and speak. Um, it's never fun to come and speak, but it's things that we need to hear, um, especially, uh, items like the Brooklyn item tonight, that I don't think any of us were aware of the flooding there. Um, and you, you get results. Um, Essex, now we have answers. What was supposed to be on, on this year, um, to be improved upon, but it wasn't just for the sole purpose of being able to put in the proper sewer implementations. Um, so I do thank everybody for coming out, bringing your concerns, and, and we hope to address all of them in a way that's satisfactory. Um, and a special thank you to Sherri tonight, because this has been the easiest, um, planning department, anything that we've ever had to go through in that she's gone line by line, spelling out how it's either been met, or how a waiver is, is requested. Um, and so instead of us spending hours and hours and hours studying these, um, maps and not really understanding to the, the best of our abilities, um, you did a great job. I'm, I'm so impressed with what you did here. I know it took you a very long time, it just made our jobs a lot easier, so thank you.
Um, we got a question about well number six. Has the pump been installed, and is it working?
The pump has not been installed, it's ordered. Uh, Lee can probably speak more to well number six, if you would please.
Well, the pump's been ordered, and, um, we have no, we have no answer on a arrival or installation date. Um, the contractor can't really give us any much more information than it's on its way.
And we were under the impression it would be installed by October the fourth.
That was our hope.
And it's been out of commission for an entire year, um, our number one water producer.
Not for lack of trying.
I know, but that's not good. I have another question, and this concerns the, um, the soccer complex that we're supposedly pursuing behind Glover Park?
Okay.
Our, okay, uh, we were told that, that we should look for a tourism grant that would put the money on a soccer complex as opposed to the junction?
So in my manager's report, I reported that, uh, I had a meeting with Hillary Sherman, who's the EDA representative for North Carolina, and there are enhanced Economic Development Administration programs, uh, specifically for tourism. So, we reviewed, we being myself and, and Coy, we reviewed with her some of the possibilities of a grant application for getting money for additional tourism. And when we talked about the junction and the farmer's market, she thought that was great to bring local people to the junction, but she didn't believe it would have the regional impact that the EDA is looking for with those grant funds.
How far is regional?
Uh, they're talking a twelve, fifteen-county area.
Okay.
Eastern North Caroli...
Hours, yeah.
Yes, and, um, she's seen firsthand the impact that sports complexes have with communities. Uh, Rocky Mall, for example, with their sports complex, they have tournaments there every weekend. They pull teams from Virginia, South Carolina, uh, every weekend that they have tournaments there. And it, it has real economic impact that's far extending than just the Edgecombe, Nashville area. That's the type of impact project that they're looking for. So, she thought after Coy and I had thrown out well, you know, it would be nice, there's twenty acres, um, next to Glover Park, that, uh, we could possibly pursue and put additional soccer fields on that, to the point where we could have soccer tournaments at Glover Park also, which again, have the impact of bringing teams from other states to participate in, and have that real regional economic impact that the EDA is looking for.
But we would have to purchase the land.
We would have to, EDA money can't be used for land acquisition. It can be used for the development, the, the grading and laying out, and, and, uh, the facilities for that, which would, you know, would be probably quite a bit more than just the purchase of land. Now, um, I've instructed Coy to reach out to that property owner, see if there was any interest at all in selling that land to the town for this purpose, just to know. We could report back to the council, this is a possibility, or, you know, the property owner has no desire to sell, so it's not, not a viable project at this time.
Anything else?
So, it's off the table.
I, I don't know.
I don't think they've heard back. I think he was saying it's one of the two, you know, just that he could come back with an answer.
I haven't made contact.
You have not, okay.
We have not made contact yet.
Okay, but bottom line is, we would have to purchase the land first before applying for the grant.
Or have it locked up where, you know, if we get the grant, we purchase, I don't think we necessarily have to buy the land before we get a grant award, but we would have to have it worded in our grant application that our participation or our, our local match would be...
Conditioned upon.
The purchase of the land.
And it's an eighty-twenty?
Yes.
Now, this twenty, this twenty acres you're referring to, is that behind Glover Park, or to, or that land between the park and the funeral home?
Behind.
No, it's not the land between the park and the funeral home, it's...
Behind.
Yeah, the church on site.
To the west.
To the, to the west, behind it.
Glover Park Memorial Drive goes west, and you go back into the property that is gonna be Cardinal Woods, and it's just to the right.
You're gonna have more traffic.
Well, that, that's what I was gonna say. You don't, you don't want to put anything over there, because you, you added more traffic into what we already fighting with right now.
But one of the things you, you had mentioned, Larry, that Coy and I kinda picked up, if we're able to do this, uh, we can't, we, we, we've already reached out to the church for land, and they said no. But maybe they would give us six, sixty-six feet on the north side of Glover Park that we can put another access to the park...
And to Glover Park.
And to that soccer complex.
And a parking lot.
Where, whereby, yes, and a parking lot.
Well, the parking lot could be in that new...
Traffic on Glover Park Memorial Drive at all.
Right, yeah, if you can do it that way, I would, I'd be in favor.
I really like that idea you came up with.
Yeah, okay.
So it's just in an investigative stage, really?
Can we investigate other, other potential lands that are just outside of Glover Park? Does it need to attach to Glover Park?
It may not, but, uh, you know, there, there's, we already have the restroom facilities there, we already have a parking lot there. Uh, there, there are advantages to locating it there, so we can share facilities.
Right, okay.
Okay. Lynn?
I just wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight. We appreciate your being here, and that's it.
Larry?
Well, I echo on everything everybody said. Uh, I like it when the room is full like this. That gives us, that gives us a chance to hear, hear your concerns, and your feelings, and your input, and, and believe you, believe it. We are, we are taking your input serious. Uh, and the drainage, uh, drainage stuff over in Brooklyn, I thought we had been going, I know we've gone in and cut grass a couple times, but I, I thought sure we were cleaning that ditch out, but I'm told tonight that we've never cleaned it out. And I, that's news to me, I thought we were cleaning it out. But, uh, I think that's something we can take care of.
And again, I thank everybody for coming up.
And we've got a hand in it.
Okay, I thank everybody. Go ahead.
Just let me ask this, 'cause what are y'all gonna do about these, uh, maps and plaques and stuff that's in a room at the, at the city complex, or, or, or white-up room, whatever name that street is? Is that something that y'all manage? There's nothing on file. You can't go through the door and say, I wanna know what happened on Essex Road. He could, they, they don't have...
Can I tell you something that's a little more shocking? We don't even know where our water pipes, all of them are, everything's so old and filed.
I'm sure that is.
And we're trying to get our, um, what are we doing with our maps and things, Sherri?
Asset inventory assessment.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do on everything, so we can find out where stuff is, when it happened. And we real, I don't think we can really give you an honest answer, and I hate to say it, because we, we really don't know. It's just like with our water lines and how old they are. You, I, it was very interesting when you were talking about the last, your street. I was sitting here thinking, we don't even know when our water pipes were put down, you know? So anyway, but I understand where you're coming from, but if we find out, you'll be the first person we let know.
I mean, I'm just asking, because it, it doesn't reflect well on this town.
No.
Because we're in this position, as I say, in the twenty-first century.
And you're absolutely right, but you know, I can't do something about something I didn't know, and I wasn't involved with it.
Right.
But I can do my very best and be as honest with you as I can to tell you, if I hear something going forward, I'm gonna do what I can to make it right. And, uh, they've said they appreciate you coming, and I do too. And it's sorta like when I was a principal, I'd tell every parent, there's no way I can fix a problem in my school if you don't make me aware of it. So don't ever hesitate to call us. We care about every one of our citizens, believe it or not, we do. So don't ever, you've got our numbers on our website, don't ever mind calling us if you have a concern, or even if you just won't talk, call us. But anyway, thank you so much for coming and being honest with us about your concerns. And do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
Do I, a second. There's a motion and a second that we adjourn, so meeting is adjourned.